Thanks for coming, everybody. Again, we all have a hard time talking to individuals. Um, we, uh, we, everybody sign the manifest, okay? Okay, and then, um, we need to approve the public and non-public minutes of November 13th, um, the public and non-public minutes of November 19th, uh, the public minutes of November 25th, and the public minutes of December 9th.
They were real page-charge.
Yeah. Yeah. They were.
It can be that kind of night, huh?
So I need a motion.
I need a motion to accept the public, non-public of the November 13th, November 19th, November 25th, December 9th.
Second, anybody?
I second that.
Any discussion on any of those? Any changes or anything with that?
I didn't, I browsed and brushed it out.
All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? So moved. Citizens comments, if anybody found anything in the room? Is there anybody online? Alex is online, does he have anything? Add at this point?
I don't have anything at this point, no, thank you.
Alex. Get right into it, is, um...
Hi, Kenny, can I speak?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I have nothing.
Perfect. Thank you. Kaylee's on here. Okay. So, that... Karen, I had last meeting, we got another presentation this month.
So, I put that on my report.
Okay.
Um, sorry, we missed that one. We're waiting for the consultant to come do a little more work with our students before they feel like they can present in front of these big scary people.
I'm not scary.
I know, I tried to tell them that, but they were like, so it'll be for sure January, but our consultant's coming a week after we get back with our kids, so they'll be ready then.
Thank you. Uh, superintendent's report, David.
Jump right into it, so, uh, in the report that I shared, I gave you a couple of, um, updates on some things that we have going on, um, just to make sure I am in the right update, I am. Winchester High School selection update, um, Winchester recently held their high school information night and did a great job with, uh, a couple of our students and some staff members, uh, we remain in the running, uh, process will continue, uh, with a public forum on January 23rd, and then right before deliberative session, we're inviting you to two schools that are gonna be on their warrant back to present to anyone in the town who wants to come to Winchester School to hear, and it'll be more specific, they'll be based on questions that they have that are pertinent to their family members, trying to help make a decision on which school they'd want to go to. We're hopeful that Hinsdale is, is one of those two schools on the warrant will know on January 23rd for certain, if that is the case. Um, not in the board report, but in line with that, uh, as I allude to the last paragraph, uh, our tuition exploratory committee will have met prior to this board meeting, like literally just finished our meeting 10 minutes ago. Um, pretty spirited conversation of talking about the what-ifs and making sure that we have all of our ducks in a row. Um, some of the items that we discussed wa- was certainly the calendar and the timeline that Winchester is on to name an anchor school. The March 2025 warrant article would indicate which school they would negotiate with. Next year would then be a tuition agreement discussion between the two school boards and their respective legal counsel, and then on March 2026 Winchester would have on its warrant the actual article for the tuition agreement. Because it's a cost item, the town would have to vote for it, and so that becomes an article for them to decide on. So, lot, lots to do between now and then, and a lot can go on between now and then. But what our, uh, group wanted to do was, one, schedule a community forum for our town to give people the opportunity to come and express their thoughts, feelings, opinions, questions about adding upwards to 40 students in the freshman year, a few years from now, um, in our school, what impact that would have. Um, we also wanna measure out in more detail, what are the impacts going to be? We have a general sense, um, it, one thing it won't do is it won't add money to our budget, it will add revenue to our budget, which will reduce the amount that we'll have to tax our, our residents for to pay for our budget. In terms of an increase in, 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 in the budget, um, there might be an increase in a staff member or two, there'll certainly be some, um, we talked about like technology, we'd have to add some laptops, so we're gonna work through all of those details, and that way we have a pretty good idea of what the impact is gonna be. But basically what we're gonna try to do is answer the questions before folks from town come and ask them, so that we have, um, and really kind of leave no, no stone unturned. We, um, as a group, we did run out of time tonight, we're gonna send around, uh, a shared document, brainstorm all of those, uh, tasks, as well as put a couple dates out and decide which night we think would work best. We believe before January 23rd, before the Winchester Community Forum, that would make the most sense for us. Um, so we'll have that information just as soon as we're able to get it, okay? Um, our regional education collaborative discussions, uh, will begin when we return from the holiday. I reached out to a number of, uh, area superintendents, talked with Patty Wallace, she's talked, uh, or at least I think floated the idea, um, to area special ed directors as well, that this conversation is beginning, and a collaborative is, as we've shared before, it's a location where we have those providing related services to students that, uh, would reduce cost for us, because we would share costs with other districts for those services. So instead of sending some students out of district, uh, for some of those services that could be handled by a different group of folks that we control costs for, we therefore reduce, uh, we're hopeful we reduce our costs. Those are just beginning, in the report that Maria shared with you, there are links that bring you to some examples in the state that already exist. So the model is there, it's just about getting people on board and everyone agreeing that that's the direction we wanna move in, how we wanna structure it. Okay. Um, so Patty and I will work on that, it'll be an initial meeting with superintendents and we'll bring our special ed directors in. Uh, and we also wanna know who else needs to be at the table, so there may be other superintendents who are interested that just may be beyond the 30-minute drive, uh, route, so we're gonna wanna talk about that as a group. AP Rural Network update, AP potential, Anne and I will be working on mining the data for AP potential to identify those scholars that we'll recommend for AP enrollment next year, uh, but the AP Rural Network, uh, the name is being changed to the AP Rural Collaborative. I just continue to use network, but it's AP Rural Collaborative. Um, we're meeting January 8th, and some of the schools already have students identified that they wanna put into some of the classes. So we're not there yet, um, because we don't do our program and study rollout until January, and we don't do course selection until February. Um, so we're, we're gonna work with that group to make sure we have spots in, in all of the classes that are available. And then we'll backfill those once we have students who like to take those courses. But I would suspect that we're gonna see a slight increase in the number of students who are taking AP, because the opportunities are gonna be great, great. So AP Psych comes to mind, AP Political, uh, or AP Gov, uh, Politics, those are two courses that typically sell out a lot of other schools. We've never been able to offer, well now we have an opportunity for kids to be able to take it, so we're pretty excited about that. Uh, I did speak with Mr. Huntley, Anna, and he's excited to really explore what teaching AP French online is like. Hasn't been able to teach the class in a long time, so he's pretty fired up for it.
I bet. That's great.
Yeah, so to be able to offer that, and you know, a great reward for him for sticking with it, and to be able to have some of our students and other students around the state who normally wouldn't get to be able to take that, so, a lot of good stuff going on there. And then with, uh, campus safety and security, naturally, we're always concerned about safety and security. Uh, we did have a task force meeting on, uh, November 19th, uh, Mark was there, which was great, um, it was great to have him as the representative. We had Rich Kane, who's the retired police chief out of Exeter, he's also right now the interim chief in Newport. Uh, sorry, sorry, Newton, which is right next to East Kingston, it's on the seacoast. But he's also the director of security for SAU 16. Um, so I have, you know, he and I have a professional relationship, uh, he and I have done work together before. He came and spent, I would say, Mark the majority of the time, addressing, um, questions, but also offering his observations. He and his wife had driven up a week or two prior, because he wanted to see the campus, the physical campus. And so he had some recommendations just on what he saw, which were really helpful. I think the group really got a lot out of it, um, they learned a lot, and they had more questions for him. Our next step, and I spoke with, uh, Ms. Rock today, uh, we're gonna send a team of folks to Alice Training, so we can all get beefed up on what that looks like, and then we're gonna make sure everyone here understands what Alice, Alice's protocols are, um, as well as, um, preparing responses for grant requests, so once the grant window opens again, they do a cycle of security grants every year. We wanna already have our language written for what we need, so we could just immediately respond, submit, and be approved. And, and Rich, um, has offered to assist us with that, as well as give us some extra support up in Concord when the decisions are being handed out. So it was, uh, I thought it was a great meeting, I don't know, Mr. Sprague, you have any other comments about that?
I thought it was a really good meeting, like, very, very intelligent man.
Yeah.
Very well-spoken, um, it was, uh, one of the amazing things that I thought of, that I never thought of, is like, everybody wants to shelter in place, and, you know, he's a belief that get out of the building.
I know, I love that.
You know, he, he goes, you need to get out of the building, you know, if you can get out of, I never thought of it that way, and, you know, but it was very, very informative, very smart man.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that, um, that would conclude the report, I mean, there's a whole bunch that we have, I certainly have policies that we wanna do a first read of tonight. Um, so I'm going to reserve my time for those.
I just had a question, did, does Winchester record their board meetings?
Uh, we do.
Do, do, do you know where to find them?
I, I think I, I think I could find them.
I've been looking, I couldn't find any, but it's from, it's like, 2017.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, we don't record, no, we don't, no, we do not, we, uh, we're a town meeting, we do live stream and record for budget committee meetings and such. No, we don't record our meetings, no, sorry, but I know someone who attends those. I'll talk to the superintendent and see if, he'll make himself available.
Just thought it would be neat, give them a flash on, just see what they're talking about. When do they meet?
Join us.
I was gonna say, when do, when does Winchester?
First Thursday of every month. So January 2nd, come on down.
Get through the rest of these meetings in the next month and a half.
Wait, who are you talking to? Wanna talk about meetings? Two towns.
You're the king of those. And all your regional stuff. Yes, that's right.
That's correct.
It also has a lot of meetings right now.
That's correct.
So the, the, so I just had a couple questions on your, so, uh, regional, Ed, is that, is that, will the kids be taking those classes this year or next year? Is that the plan?
For AP. Starting in the fall. Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we started working this two years ago.
Yeah. Perfect. All right, and then, um, I'm wondering if, if maybe a non-public we can, or we could get an update on one of some of the things he observed in his, um, script check of our campus.
Sure, yeah, happy to do that. Yep, and I, I do have a reason to go on a non-public Facebook, I will have a reservation for you. Not mine, but someone else's.
Good.
Checking in, checking in.
All right, anybody else have any other questions for that time?
Wayne's become a whiz with.
I know, I have to touch, so it doesn't do that. But I'm like, oh, what's my password? Um, well, we can't have the old. Thank you, Dr. Ryan. We got the, uh, Jane's report for the business administrator. Super short.
Yes, Madam Chair, you have my report, it's very short, then, I've been working, it's just, there's a lot going on, pretty narrow and what I'm working on.
I think we have proof of that.
Um, but I did wanna just bring up one thing, um, tax rate did get finally set today.
Okay.
Um, and I know it had been widely said that we were going up 1.9 million just because of the schools. I'd like to clarify that, we're going up 732,000 because of the schools, so I hope the, uh, retraction is as loud and as vocal and on Facebook page as the original statement that I did ask to have checked with me, and I was told they didn't need to, so, totally a 1.2 million dollar difference. Sorry, just needed to say that.
Do you know what our percentage is?
Percentage as far as the, I can work on it for you, but, I'm just entering the, I just went and sprinted on, because my email came up, so I went and turned it on, that's what it was like to me, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So I'm just inputting them into my worksheet. Oh, yeah, well, the total rate's 29.39, just so you know.
Yeah, that really will bite some of it down.
Any questions for Jane? No, leaving on, Director of Academic and Career Readyness, um, you have my report, Madam Chair, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I apologize, I didn't put that statement in my report about our, uh, student agents' duties, uh, but as I said, they will report out next month. They did do a presentation to Rock and Dr. Ryan about their idea for a, uh, student-led change in the building. Um, I think both Ms. Rock and Dr. Ryan are excited, and I am, about what they came up with, especially that they came up with on their own. Um, but again, they need a little more polishing before they can present, because it's a big topic.
I was surprised that they weren't ready for.
Well, a few of them weren't ready.
I mean, a few of them were ready, it rolled right through us, so.
I have to find this one, I have to polish it.
Yeah, they were great, and I'm, I'm excited about their work.
Enthusiastic, yeah.
I love the social studies competencies, um...
Uh, I, Jeannie's here today, too, so, um, a lot of work has been going into the, that, the social studies review, so I'm gonna get to here a little bit, but I accept.
If you could get, like, the, um, a write-up and maybe a picture of Crystal with her giraffe.
I can, I can text you the picture.
Yeah.
And I'll email you a write-up.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, yep.
Does anybody have any, you asked for it.
No, I thought the Bernie Mac, the trade was pretty cool, I was excited last year, last month for the students.
No, congratulations, that's very, yeah.
Yeah, um, the other exciting thing about that is, is that, um, Mike Rowe from, um, 30 jobs.
That's...
Gives out, he gave out a lot of money that day, but he also gives out, um, that's small scholarships, 1,500 dollars each. He has a much bigger, bigger pool, as you probably know, that he gives out across the country, and both of our kids are applying for the bigger amount. And they were so, that, that, the words to me were, what he said that day really stuck with us and makes such a difference, because I realized trades are so important, and so they're going for the, I mean, some, he, he gives out the $20,000 scholarships. So some of our kids are gonna go for some of the, I mean, 20,000, 50,000, some are 15,000, but I, both of the boys are gonna apply for bigger ones, so they're going for the gusto, so fingers crossed.
Maybe as well try it.
Yeah, right.
All right, anything else for Karen? This was your report, Anna.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have my report, um, I would just like to start by celebrating that, um, in terms of professional staff, I am fully staffed.
Yeah.
It's an exciting place to be. Pamela Spurlock Johnson jumped right in, she's been fantastic, she has great energy, she's been super flexible and, um, wanting to try new things, which is very exciting, so we're really glad to have her. Um, I realize I haven't put this in my board report, but the social studies competencies reminded me of it. Um, department PLCs for the last couple of months have been working on identifying by department, um, vertically, what their core competencies are that all kids should be learning in their department throughout their time, um, and then their next step is gonna be to create rubrics for each of those, um, because we have in our, um, in their grade books, they have the 100-point scales, but they also have four-point scales, and so kind of fine-tuning how they're assessing those standards on the four-point scale, um, and then eventually they will start making common assessments that can be used across grade level, so, um, trying to really work on the vertical alignment in all of our departments, when that, that work is being led by Jeannie with social studies, and we're about to start science, but, um, sprinkling some of that work into all of our departments, I think will benefit everybody across the board. Um, we had a lot of great professional development in November, um, highlight for me was we had a fantastic day with the folks from Casco Bay working on our advisory program, and we had referenced this a little bit at the last meeting, so teachers had time to talk about what's going well, what their challenges are, and hear from, um, Susan and Derek, who are, or recently were acting as advisors in a high school, so really have that relevant experience to speak from and answer questions, and, um, we had a closing circle at the end of the day, and there was laughter, there was tears, um, and several people said it was the best PD they'd ever been to. So it was a really powerful day, um, and a good way to go into break, so I was glad for that. Um, and basketball season is in swing, so.
Yeah, they both won their first two games.
Yes, very exciting, yeah, I heard it was very intense last night, I, yeah, sorry, it wasn't there.
With ease, as long as you stay healthy.
Does anybody have any questions for Anna? Good news. Yes. Thank you, Anna. Welcome. We have Dr. Brenner.
I'm Chair members of the board, we have our report, um, we've, uh, been also looking at science and social studies, um, but if we're not at the stage there, and, um, you know, it's good to know what the goal is, we're gonna go towards, so they're working on the goal, and we'll back up. Um, and, um, but we are, um, unpacking more ways to use our mind literacy program, um, which I know was a, a big purchase in recent years, and so I just want to, to highlight that that's being used also in science and also in social studies, and, um, uh, we know that we want more inquiry and hands-on work in sciences, social studies, but we also need to make sure that we are preparing our students with solid background knowledge, um, across those topics. Um, heard me before, you'll hear me all year, um, working on attendance, uh, so a couple of things that we did recently, um, so in November, we sent home 31 letters for high unexpected absences, so it's just five or more, um, and 10 is the, the real nodding number, um, and so, um, so really wanting to, um, talk with folks, um, and it's been really helpful to talk with folks, right? So those letters opened better streets of communication, we were able to have our nurse talk with parents and give more education on what is an unexcused absence, what is an excused absence, we were able to shift some of the unexcused absences to excused absences, once those conversations happen. Um, and, and overall just provide them, um, some more information on the importance of attendance, um, and collect some data, and, and some of that data is that, you know, it's not a school refusal problem, great, wonderful, let's work on, on what it is then. Um, and some of it was some school refusal problem, but let's work on that, too. Um, the other piece on the celebration side of attendance, uh, we did have a challenge week in November, so there was that one week where we only were here three days. So we're like, let's all be here, um, and so we ended up sending out 193 certificates for achieving perfect attendance that week. Still 80% for that week, but it was a great way to again, keep that thought in forefront, and so our next challenge week will be when we return from the holiday break, we only have two days that week, and so that'll be a good, you know, let's get right back, and so we'll be really playing that up before we head out next week. Um, and then our staff are, are constantly learning about the impact of attendance and different ways to help, and there's only so much we can control, and there's only so much parents can control, and we're all trying to work together. Um, but, uh, you know, to, to talk about the test scores, um, that we've been talking about, um, uh, abstentism can account for 27% decline in math on, on formal tests and 45% in reading. And so, we, we have, this has to continue to be a thing that we work on, and so we all are working on it, which is great. Um, we are still hiring from some spots, feedback from ourselves, though, they are thankful for the increase. Um, they, they said that they're, uh, you know, a little more, if they were on the fence about doing it on certain days, that they'll do an extra day a week or something, so, and we were able to, been interviewing more subs, so, um, I've interviewed some, Anna's interviewed some, Maria's added some from our HASS program, so I just want you to know, there's work has been a change.
Thank you.
Which is helpful. Um, I, I'm stretched kind of thin right now with that guidance position, um, out, so I'm, I popped in as a 504 coordinator, and actually I'm doing a lot of the guidance classes. Um, so, we're all, we're all pitching in there still, um, we had our community meeting, our book fair, um, and we did some wild things with our staff on the underground spirit week. Talked about all that in our concerts coming up, in our next all-school week, next week, too, so.
Well, thank you for doing all the work on the attendance, that's, I'm encouraged to see that. Parents, I think that's gonna be huge, for sure, so, thank you. Anybody got anything for that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Director of Technology.
Madam Chair, you have my report, you have to answer any questions.
I haven't even, anybody got anything for us?
I'll highlight the coincidence of the focus on cybersecurity this month.
Weird. The anniversary of some event.
Right, yeah. I think it'll be good, it'll be interesting to see how the test works, getting that done.
Yeah.
Hopefully we're good to go.
Yeah.
I mean, you've already had one test.
I know, yeah.
Oh, we failed.
Yeah, failed that one.
But you, but you did some rest.
But you were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll be good, because even if, even if we have some shortcomings, it'll give us some guidance somewhere to go.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Justin. Director of Student Services.
Madam Chair and Board, you have my report, that I, this is the first report, it was per requested, um, so I kinda did it for the year, you know, from, since the beginning of the year, so that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I kinda did it like that, so if you have any questions?
That was great, thank you for all the information, it was, I love having it. Any questions for that?
A little above my, a little above my reading ability. Yeah. Great job.
I know, I was, when I, I think I read through it a couple times, and then it answers my own questions, and I did have one, but then I was like, oh wait, no. Oh, no, I did have one. Um, so, are these ranges for the number of students, like number of special education students that moved out of districts? Is that just a range, 1 to 15, or?
Yeah, that should be 10 to 15, I apologize, that should be 10 to 15, sorry, I, I kinda did it in five-minute increments, and I, and I was like, why does that say 1 to 15? It should be 10 to 15, so I apologize.
And then, okay, so those are all ranges, but I just wanted to make sure we weren't going from one number to another, because I was like, whoa, that's a...
Yeah, no, no, I, I do. So, sorry about that, that was my fault.
I just wanted to make sure, that was it for me. Any other questions for Patty? Great.
Thank you, Patty.
Again, I don't know why we never did this before.
Well, you know what the saying is, it's the way we've always done it, so, yeah, sometimes it takes, uh, takes just a different perspective.
Thank you, Anna.
Mike, yeah, thank you, Mr. Do So. My question, Maria, is our agendas, uh, that include board packet material gets posted online? So people would have access to this, because I think that was the purpose of Mr. Do So, recommending that we do this, so people can see more information, particularly around budget season, so, perfect, great, thank you.
All right, Facility Director.
I'm Chair, members of the board, you have your report, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Loving all of this info, too.
I know.
Yeah, this is...
I know, I feel like those don't usually pass so breezily, and you all seem very relaxed, and we passed, so that's really exciting.
Yeah, we, we...
We worked real hard.
Yes.
It seems real breezy in the report, so, I was like, wow, they're all so fun.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, that's, I'm looking back at some of the things that, you know, both inspectors are looking for. It just helped me prepare for what we needed to be ready to go, and, I mean, for the most part, we were good, and I, just a couple small things, it was really just like moving stuff around more than anything.
It was really just like moving stuff around more than anything. But, you know, like I said, I believe I mentioned it, both principals were really responsive for all the stuff that we needed to do. And came in, it went like a breeze, no problems.
That's great. That's a big one too.
Any questions? Budget Development Update is our first.
I assume. So as you're aware, we did meet the other night. I did have some updates to the budget, including, I don't think I did get back to you on this one, but I have reprinted everything. So I'm not paginated with the exact pages that you have. And then tell me to pull now and put these in their place. So during the meeting, I'm going to, I'm going to copy and patch it. And there's a couple of new things in there as well. I had said that night that I was working on the debt schedule. Because I want to make it clear that although we're not going to be paying the budget, or the, I'm sorry, the bond. We're also not going to be getting offset. So the document that you have in your worksheet has the bond information. So what I've done is I put the corresponding revenue information. So you will see that, that net cost and then where it's going to, what's going to continue after that. So I did expand that based on discussion in those meetings. And then I also put one together as far as the health insurance increase over six years. So you can kind of see the increase and then I did an average. A little harder this year because we have both a twelve point six and eleven point ones. Like I did an average for that one. But just so you can kind of get an idea.
We did speak.
And that was also something that you brought up. So I just want you to be aware that when I do these worksheets, I do them based on what's discussed at both budget meetings and this meeting. And these were kind of because I sat on both boards and I had questions. So when I became the BA, I had questions and I still want to know the preparation. But if you find something that you want, please let me know. And I can see if I can find a way to develop it and get that information. Because to me, more information means maybe fewer questions, yeah, so. Oh, but the other update was, I did get the SRO number and that did drop that number by twelve thousand and change. So I have redone the district-wide budget as well. So we'll see that one to insert.
You said twelve thousand, didn't you?
Yeah, it was twelve thousand and something, Mark, I can't remember the exact, but you'll see that change. And I've done the corresponding budget page and the explanation page. Because remember, I had that in yellow, I was waiting. So I did get that number and so now I have that updated for next year.
Okay, thank you. Dan, are you on that back?
I called and spoke with her. We connected at security.
Oh, yeah.
And she said she was bringing it to the select room.
It'll be forthcoming.
Questions on that, anybody?
Thank you very much for all your extra work, Jane. Still been, still been a very busy month and a half.
I know, that's why your report can't. We've seen you wait way more.
But I notice there's fewer questions when I do that, so I might just.
I'm going to be short and sweet all year.
All right, social media protocol. I know we had talked about Facebook and commenting and having things come up on Facebook and how you might want to respond to them. So I want us to have a discussion about it, basically, and find out what everybody's thinking.
For the. So we can, we can talk about, we can talk about the community connections page.
It would be nice to.
We start there. Yeah, so the question I think that had come up was whether or not we should respond to. Right now, we don't have any commenting.
Right.
On our, so the thought, there was a thought thrown out that maybe we should open it up to comments. It's fine, but it's like, it's, there's.
A runaway train as well.
Exactly.
Well, and.
Who's going to, you know, when it comes up, is somebody able to monitor it right away?
And that was, when I created it, we didn't feel like no one is available twenty-four seven. And I think if a comment, especially an inappropriate comment, you can, I went through and I did make it so that like any, every swear and things. Yeah. Flag, but it was still like, oh, I don't, it's just because it is representing the district. If someone at one AM writes an inappropriate comment and no one sees it for hours, I just, I don't think it's the best look. But I do, I don't know how we get more interactive and without any interaction, you know?
There's an opportunity for interaction every second. I don't think it's safe to open it up.
I don't think so either, it just had come up.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great way to get the information out. And if they have something to talk about, then they have all of our administrative administration present to ask questions at that time and get the answers formally from us as a board and as a group of administrators. Thank anybody to be entering.
The meeting?
Yeah.
I posted it Sunday or something. And then I pin it to the top of the page, so it's easy to find. So, all right, so, so we're all, so we're all still the same. I said that we don't really need to be commenting on stuff on Facebook from, from that and stuff. Or have them comment on our page.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we're still all on the same page. And I think if things come up that we find they're misinformation, maybe we can, my thought process is maybe we can have a discussion about that. And how I respond to that specifically as it comes up, that makes sense.
So, three weeks ago, middle of the car ride home, I rarely get a text from Kayla that quarter night at night.
I know, I was like, it's kind of like, but I'm doing it.
So I had to read what she had sent me and it was some information that had been posted in the community Facebook page. And it was not correct information. It was some misinformation, again, going to a parent who thought we were expanding enrollment at the elementary school in the surrounding town. I had asked her if she could simply put, I typed out a paragraph and she went ahead and posted it. We didn't check the board, we didn't do anything, but I, I felt like we needed to put a stop to the misinformation. Say, no, this is the right info and here's what's going to be coming up as a result of that. I was going to ask under this, if in those instances, if we're, if the board is okay with us doing that, that whomever the board member is that sees something that just isn't right and checks with me on it, if we can craft a response and send it up. Because I know that that's not right now permitted under the current communication plan.
Yeah.
Which I want to remind you is was developed during COVID.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we had. We need to look at that anyway, because it needs to be.
Yeah.
That is absolutely going to be coming out of the strategic plan, is that action step.
I do, I do agree with correcting like misinformation, because ninety percent of the misinformation you see out there about town or school, the people who state it and read it, a lot of them don't come to get the corrected information. So then it just runs and runs and runs and decisions are being made at voting time because of things that they believe not, not the true fact. So I do believe in that instance, it was, it was the proper thing to do, absolutely.
But it is, I think we definitely should be checking in with you first, just because whenever we post, it is, like, I'm always very careful now when I'm posting in any in-stale group and I usually don't, because you can't post enough. Also, people be like, well, she's a board member, so. So I think us checking in with you is probably, we should put, maybe put that into our policy.
Yeah, I would definitely recommend we do that, knowing too, that we can't yell at every barking dog.
But that was.
Running at us.
Right, and it's coming up and we don't want people having a negative idea about such a, you know, potentially positive situation. So I think things that are really impactful, but little stuff, we have to just, whatever, you know, move on, but big stuff.
That was a big one, that was definitely, yeah.
Which is why I was like, yeah, it's kind of late, but I was like, keep up, it's fine.
He's still driving.
Yeah, I was like, he's fine.
I may have pulled over. Siri.
Okay, so would it be okay if I just looped in on that stuff too? Just because I know.
I think it's, yeah, so whomever the board member is, I think maybe just copy April if it's not you, April.
You and me.
And, yeah, and then we just, we just respond that way. I'm like, yeah, send it up. Yeah, I think that's fair. Because my policy, you're the spokesperson for the board in between meetings, that's in our policy. And so that you should have something to do with that, for sure.
All right, great. When you need to take it, go ahead, Justin, sorry.
That's okay, I just better, um, just thinking about you, your comment about wanting to be, maybe be a little more interactive with members of the public, but without enabling comments, we could have created an email group, a ZIL, SB, or something like that, for people to send in. Maybe you have, you know, whatever the questions are, maybe during these monthly meetings, you have a brief period where you have a question that can be answered. Just get to answer there and then reference the recording.
Yeah.
For the answers, people will get more people look at the recordings, maybe more people get involved. We also just do a form that they fill out and it just emails that, the mail group. But then if they send it to that mail group, all five of you will get it at the same time.
I know some people on Community Connections have like tried to make a post, because we have to prove it anyway. And they've asked questions that way and I, you know, responded, you know, I rejected it and responded to the, to them directly with it. But, yeah.
Connections email.
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah. It was during.
But we could make a post about it too.
Yeah, even so, something like that, if you could always like make a post and say, this was just a question. Other people probably have it and you could answer, or even like the last Friday of the month or something, take five questions that were emailed, then list it there. Something kind of being just, yeah. If one person has that question, somebody else probably does.
Great, yeah.
A couple I get on Community Connections aren't really like everybody's thinking that, but. Wanted to get ahold of another parent, I was like, oh. Forum to do that. Just like.
I did not know that.
Or the parent page.
I did direct him to the parent page.
Is your channel the most?
Right, yeah, yeah, a lot of that stuff going on.
So I can set up a couple of different options and that, you can demo it and then decide what you want to push out there, anything.
Yeah, I, yeah, we can figure it out at the next meeting or whatever, if you want to bring it to the next meeting for us to see, that would be cool.
I will say that that's, that was one of the discussions that we had in the strategic plan, community relations of, about having.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, something we don't want to interact.
Right.
We want to interact in a positive way, right? So if people have a place to ask us, ask questions, that we could, we could address them, that would, that would be good.
Yeah, and then there's, you know.
I mean, we always have the meetings that people come and ask questions to, but, you know.
But sometimes it is easier to just send a quick.
Yeah.
You know?
Yes.
All right, cool. I don't think we need to vote on that, do we, anything, like as far as the procedure of communication?
You probably should, because the communications plan is established policy by the board and you are altering it by allowing some response to some postings. You may want, I would recommend you take action.
Be worded exactly, do you think?
David? No, we need your wordsmithing. To amend.
What do you think, Wayne?
I'm just because it's, it's, it's not saying, it's not saying that we can respond to Facebook.
Right.
You know, misinformation, but that it's saying that we can. Contact the. Know the wording, the right wording.
So I would say something similar to, make a motion that in the event of a significant piece of misinformation on social media, a board member will contact the superintendent and share in order to provide a response.
Yeah, that works.
I make that motion.
Okay. I'll second. Any more discussion on here? Everybody in favor?
I have no idea how she types that fast, I couldn't even read it.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Schedule for the public forum at this point?
Yes, that's correct, I mean, we're, we'll have it, we'll have it prior, we'll settle on it prior to the break. So we'll get it back to the board to let, and. Yeah, so the board won't be able to necessarily vote on it.
I mean, if it's after our January meeting, we can vote on it or January.
It will definitely be after, I mean, it'll probably just be that week after.
You promise to vote, yes.
So, I mean, we can, yeah, we, yeah.
You can technically do a call around too, for a meeting, but.
I would.
Oh, you can't do it to.
We could like just.
Not for action.
Meeting, but not like, yeah, something like that.
Because it would be a board meeting, because the forum of the board would be there. We'd have to post and so the board would have to agree on that meeting, just like you do on your monthly meetings, you agree to have that schedule, so.
I mean, if we have to just stop, stop it.
If we get three of you to come by one day.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that.
I mean, Dr. Ryan, that week of the sixth, I can be pretty flexible, so if you want to just throw a date out.
We know we'll have two board members there, right? At least who are on the committee. And then we want to be respectful of other committee members' time.
Nothing else is going on in your life?
So you're talking about which week that we're looking at? The week of the sixth.
Okay.
So I have a meeting every night. Pardon?
I said, that's neat.
Yeah. What do you think, Friday the tenth? I'm teasing. Do we have a, is that us?
I'm available Monday.
Nope.
Are you looking at the following week now?
That night. You know what, I can probably do it on the seventh. That's a Warren Articles meeting that our board chair can manage in Rochester, so.
What do you got?
Seventh would be a Tuesday.
What time are we looking on?
What times, what times tip off? Six thirty? Five.
See, I don't have the game scheduled. But if you do, I'm good. Because I'll.
Yeah, so we couldn't do a forum that night, obviously with a game going on.
Right, because I'll be in the gym.
We wouldn't have a place.
Correct, that, that as well.
So there's, there's a game going on Tuesday and Thursday that week.
I can't do anything that week, other than that Tuesday night.
And then the following week. Want to do this in the library instead, the basketball schedule is almost impossible.
But the parking is going to not be.
We have the lot of.
They want to do a Saturday?
We did discuss that, might be.
I thought a Saturday would be better, because people are very tired, it's bedtime at four thirty.
And definitely after the game is bedtime.
But you have to come back.
I know, that's.
I'm staying tonight, I'd stay that Friday night, it's not a big deal. Do Saturday the fourth? Do we know a gym schedule? I mean, we must have people in the gym.
Yeah, right. But we can use the library.
The library would be okay.
We've done forums in there before.
Ten AM?
I like ten AM.
Karen, you're on the committee, does that work for you? Jane? Justin?
Do you say ten AM?
Yes.
Ten AM, Santa, no, he's not. He's already come to town. Good job, Anna, way to push it. Um, no longer than ninety minutes. It would depend on the number of people to, to ask, so maybe ten to eleven thirty. If, if it ends early, then we beat expectations.
I mean, there's nothing on the school calendar, that doesn't mean, I mean, I know there's rec Saturdays, but there's no other events, so that should be fine.
Before, come for coffee. Come for coffee. Very much. We can do Bright Arrow as well.
And at that, and at that point, we won't, we won't technically have our budget.
That's okay.
Yeah, it's not for budget, that's just for.
We want people to tell us.
Oh, okay.
That's just tuition.
Okay. I was not completely following everything.
For people who live in Hensville, come tell us what they're thinking about, Manchester students coming. If, if we're selected as an anchor, we're not yet.
Right.
Yeah, we want to hear.
Right.
So the board would just want to probably take action on that.
So. Can you just make a motion?
January 4th at 10 a.m. meeting forum.
So I will make a motion to have a public forum for Hensdale to ask questions about. Winchester potentially. Yeah. On January 4th at 10 a.m. In the library.
No, sorry.
Yeah, in the library. Any more discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So.
Everyone that wants to know.
No, but I think.
The community.
Uh, Tourism Exploratory Committee. And so the people that you met in here earlier. And then the board, and then anyone who wishes to come, and we'll we'll structure the, the agenda, which will be relatively simple. I'll provide an update on what's going on. And then we open the mic to people and you can facilitate that as chair. People who want to come up to Mike and express their thoughts or ask questions, and we'll try to answer the questions as best we can.
Alright, let's get this thing going out immediately, because.
It's actually pretty soon.
Yeah, it was not out fast enough before, so.
Let's get it out tomorrow.
And you and I, if we can connect about, like, it sounds like you want a wireless mic.
Ooh. Yes, please.
Oh, you have the Katie's little wearable one? And then when we pass.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're in the library.
You know, you really probably don't even need it.
We have some folks who will be there that might be hearing impaired that we probably should have it.
Yeah, that's right, ADA.
Not everyone can bellow it.
Oh, the lighting system? Awesome, great, we'll talk details tomorrow.
Perfect.
That all worked out great.
So great.
We have all the people we need.
Oh, we are moving right along.
So the overnight meal trip is next.
Overnight.
Not time to go on me.
Yeah, not yet.
We're getting there.
Sorry.
That's you, Sarah.
That's me.
Okay.
Um, I'm Sarah Burgess, I'm one of the co-advisors for FBLA, which is our future business leader from America. Billy Fraser has really taken, I missed their, whoops. Billy Fraser's really done all the work to really bring back the Hensell chapter. And we're, we have age students, and we're looking to go to the state conference, which is going to be held at the DoubleTree in Manchester, March 20th to 21st. And we've been working with Hannah on details. We're thinking we could do, we can kind of change the hotels, I think we can do actually a couple of triples. And a double, and then two singles, one for each advisor, so we only need five rooms as opposed to six, we'll save a little money there. I have the numbers off the top of my head. Registration, I believe, is opening up, I believe it opened up today, uh, to register, but if we go, uh, we compete amongst other high schools with business plans and social planning and fundraising continually up until that point. And then, um, also workshops and speakers and leaderships also work out for kids.
We already got a grant.
Yep, we already have the grant, and they've already done some fundraising, we're continuing to do fundraising, we're also going to hopefully, maybe, with the help of Karen for ideas as far as reaching out to local businesses and sponsoring students for this. Karen's a plethora. So that's the plan we would love to take, we would only need to take a van, we wouldn't need to take a bus, there's only eight students to go. So. And there's like a formal dinner that night, and then we'll stay right there in the hotel. And we could book rooms literally within like, right across the hall, because I'm not a fan of, of a night. Night trips.
Yeah.
It's very, we're here. And I will tape your door. Like I.
I like that.
I will come by. I'm 10 minutes away.
David's looking out there.
I love these, these are great, these and Decca are fantastic.
I was in FBLA when I was in school.
March 20th to the 21st.
I want to ask the kids to present the proposal to OSB to keep. Or fundraise.
Oh, how good. How exciting.
Listen, we tried to get them to come here, they're like.
We tried, that was going to be our student presentation, was down to come and present on what they're doing. They're not ready yet, they're going to have to get ready.
Make it contingent upon a report after.
I think, I think so, I think that's, I, you know, if they want to get approval for such things, and we want to continue to grow and hopefully grow bigger, then this is what we need to do. We did, we've done that, as you know.
Yeah.
With robotics. Team, we just.
I know, that was very cool.
So.
That was very cool.
So, are you saying that potentially this number would be smaller than $946?
Yes.
Well, that's just for the rooms, that doesn't include the registration. But I think the intention is that the kids won't have to pay anything out of pocket, they're going to fundraise all the money.
There's some money in the account now, and then.
And are the, so these are high school students, ninth through 12th?
Yep. I think 9, 10, and possibly an 11th. Yep.
Is there any other questions?
And it will be, um, you and Mr. Fraser going.
Yes.
Any other questions? Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the FBLA trip in March.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
Should we, should we tie in the use of the van?
Oh.
Because they're going to take a van just to.
Yeah, do we need to approve the use of the van for this?
You don't necessarily need to, you can, it's not a bad idea from liability perspective, but since you've already approved the purchase of the van and the use of the van way, way back.
Right, right.
You are technically covered that way, what would you think?
I don't think they, yeah.
Alright, perfect.
And what about their fundraising and such, we can't pre-approve money.
No, but if we fundraise or we do, we fill out the form and.
Yeah, we just follow policy for that. And the overnight field trip policies just being taken care of right now, just by her presenting to you.
Yeah, and to adults, so. Great. Within our.
Emergency contact.
Yeah.
I mean, we do that for day trips.
Right, yeah, definitely. Yeah.
You know, check them with our nurses, you know, any allergies.
Yeah.
Medications.
Yep.
You know, checking with parents, hopefully, um, we may even have, um, like, an informal parent night when we get closer, maybe after holidays, so we can so parents understand what this is, what this means, and, and what the expectations are, because it's also going to be contingent on behavior and possibly grades, depending on how we want to play that, but those are always the two contingents, even on day trips, so it would definitely, in my opinion. And then if David's there, that would also be helpful.
Right.
I would just say.
The kids would be there.
He has a meeting that night. He probably does. I think you can cancel it now.
He'll actually probably be in Hensdale.
Actually, I don't.
There's time, that's in March.
On Thursday, I already looked. Friday, I can work remotely, I'll come by. There you go.
Alright, so we're, we've got the motion in the second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So move, thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, I love that it's coming down. Alright, social studies program review proposal. Um, I'm just giving you a sense out of my size.
Yeah, this one I actually want to print. Going back and forth, my eyes are tired. And this one?
So, um, the social studies program review has been working, um, the committee has been working since last spring. Uh, well, we actually kicked off in January. These are, the first phase is framed around an inquiry question, so how do we make our social studies program more applicable, more rigorous, more engaging for kids, that's kind of the big question, but within that, there's questions like, are we aligned to standards? And like, does it reflect, um, you know, inquiry? Does it align to the state stuff, so we kind of get into all of that through, um, a little review process. Standards, and looking at the, some free standards, and looking at what inquiry is, so there's a learning piece to it as we go. And then we identify what our gaps and redundancies are, we look at our program holistically and figure out where our strengths are, where our challenges are, and then we look, we drill down a little bit more and look at our core sequence and see how our courses align to standards and competencies, and whether we're seeing a lot of redundancies and gaps, and what students really need to access in our social studies program. So, tonight is really just, um, a small part of the work, and it's the part that has to do with what's in the program of studies, because there's one page of the program of studies that's actually in the board policies under instruction, and it's this page that I'm sharing with you. So when we were looking at it, um, there were some things that we recognized needed to change. Some things are very easy, they're, you have to do clarity, um, you have to do accuracy, some things require like, a multi-year change over time process, just because it reflects, uh, students' course of studies in the high schools, so we don't want to make changes next year for kids that are midstream in the high school program. So, what I'm going to do tonight is show that we, what we'd like to see in the program of studies for next year, and then what we'd like to see in the program of studies for our current seventh graders for when they get to high school in a couple years. Um, and the reason I want to show that, the second piece will be tonight, is because, um, there's a course change that we're hoping for that means we need, uh, the rest of this year to, about to develop the changes. So let me just jump in. Oh, we're good to go. Alright, so in terms of next year's program of study, we're really just looking at the, the one. The page, so just the right side of the five, because it's part of the studies, and that's the page that's in board policy. On the left is what we want changed. I worked really closely with Joe Smith on this, but the other committee members are just following, Alexis Johnson, Dan Hartley. What you're seeing here, I'll just walk you through it, in the green, these changes really reflect clarity and language. We found the way the social studies requirements were represented was a little confusing. We didn't have, so for example, we didn't have a geography course at the high school, we don't have that, geography is required, but it's embedded in our world history course. So, we thought reflecting, like, your little concept math. And science, the requirements are underneath the number of credits, so we wanted to kind of make that change, so it's consistent. So what you'll see in green is, um, American Studies 1, American Studies 2, Civics, Economics, and World Studies. And that is in our Hensdale high school diploma. So that doesn't represent a change in what kids take, it just reflects a change in how it's represented on that page. The other change we wanted to make is, we go over to the New Hampshire Scholars column, that 3.5 credit, that's inaccurate, so we wanted to make it more accurately reflect what's required for New Hampshire Scholars, which is 2.5 credits, not 3.5 credits, so that's just a simple change. The other confusing piece on the right is where it says economics with personal finance, and then just below that, we have personal finance. There is personal finance included in the curriculum for economics, but it doesn't need to be displayed in this way, just the way you, none of the part of a curriculum needs to be displayed in this way. We thought it was confusing to have that, and then also personal finance, that personal finance course is the one that's required, so we thought, the personal finance is. It's not in social studies, um, so we don't want to keep it, it's just going to remain separate. And then, we're going to fold civics and economics into social studies, so that's what you see reflected on the left. So rather than have it separate, it's reflected, civics, economics, um, and world studies are all part of the social studies requirements, and we'll just combine them and move into the one block. We also want to change the name of the world, um, studies course, on the white, you'll see that New Hampshire minimum talks about global studies, world history, and that, we want to just change the name of the course to world studies. New Hampshire doesn't distinguish, they just list those as possible ways that you get at world studies, and we think our world studies course at the high school is going to be more focused on modern world studies, because the middle school are going to be focused on more ancient and early civilizations. And the word studies reflects all of the social studies competencies, not just the history competencies, so we thought, let's clarify that. So, measure language and accuracy, and then the, the last change is, um, the blue one, which actually is the one real change, and that has to do with offering a push and, as a choice, so kids could either take American Studies 2, or they could take AP US History. Um, as their senior required class, so, I mean, I said. So that's the one change, right now, kids have to take, um, American Studies 1, American Studies 2, and then they can take AP US, but we'd like to give them that option. Alright. Should I just carry on for the next year, if you want to ask questions now?
So the New Hampshire Scholars on this page here, right, you, it says 3.5, but you said it's 2.5, 3.5 or 2.5 for New Hampshire Scholars? Sorry.
Are you second guessing now?
So. Yeah, so that's wrong on the page.
I think right now it says 2.5, but it should be 3.5, because we're folding in the civics and the, um, economics, which are separate.
Right, you're right.
So for the New Hampshire.
Yes, but that's a change from the original chart on the right.
Right.
Because it's pushing together the civics and the econ, so that puts it up to 3.5, and puts all those things together.
And personal finance, isn't that required by the state?
Yeah.
So, so that's a zero now for New Hampshire Scholars.
Change you're making, yes. It's not required by the state.
Oh, it's not?
It is.
So.
It's required by Hensdale.
Okay, so we require, okay, so if they do the New Hampshire scholar, that doesn't.
Doesn't affect me, doesn't hurt them, doesn't help me.
Okay.
With scholars, correct.
Right. To get articles on a grade wise.
We're requiring. And I'd like to continue to do so.
Yeah. Especially all the data we got, Tom, that, that really enforced.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Because of the portrait data?
Yeah.
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 Graduate. Yeah.
So does anybody have any questions on the current?
Alright.
You good to continue?
Yes. So then. The 26, 27 school year, so that's the kids that are currently in the seventh grade. One of the, one of the big findings in our self-study is part of a program review, is that we have a lot of redundancies in ancient world civilization. Turns out that kids. in ancient world civilization. Turns out that kids are taking ancient world seven, sixth grade and then eighth grade and then eleventh grade. Um, so they really know, um, ancient nature and ancient trees.
Yep.
And not so much modern stuff. Um, and we also found that a big gap was, um, US history in the middle school. So it is in the minimum standards that kids have to have access to US and New Hampshire history in the middle school. So, um, we thought we have a perfect opportunity to eliminate that gap in the kids' learning profession. Um, and we also had an opportunity to eliminate the redundancy of having ancient world civilizations in sixth and eighth grade. Um, and it also provided us the opportunity to increase opportunities for choice at the high school. If we, and here's the big shift, move one year of American history to the middle school. So part of the literature review we did as part of the the program review process is we looked at samples of course sequences both across New Hampshire and nationally. And overwhelmingly, the course sequence has a year of American study, American history in the middle level. Um, that was a big gap. So kind of a no brainer to put American history in there. Um, so what we're proposing is that we will, beginning with this year's seventh graders, because the other folks are already in the sequence. Um, when they hit, um, next year, they would have US history in ninth grade, I mean, in eighth grade instead of the seventh grade world. Um, they would have the high school American history credit at tenth grade. So they would have one year, we're looking at one year of American history at the high school level and one year of American history at the middle school. So that's why the, if we institute that change, we really need to look at the curriculum. Yeah. Impact. That next year, right, we're just, they're going to just adapt the course, the American history course that they currently get in eighth grade. They're just going to make some adaptations. So it's appropriate for eighth graders, but they're still working with those competencies and those factors. So, um, just to recap, in middle school, one of the US, one of the world sip courses will be eliminated. Um, they'll take one course instead of two. They'll take that at sixth grade. And sixth grade will focus on ancient and early world sip, uh, which is pretty, because it's all that we have now. Then in eighth grade, um, we'll replace that one world sip course with an American history course. And then if you look at the high school, um, American Studies one will move to, uh, eighth grade. One course will be eliminated. The high school course angle change from American Studies two, because that would be really confusing, to, so we're not going to have US one in eighth grade and US two in high school. Joe Smith thought that would be super confusing on transcripts. So we're going to rename it American history, US history. You'll get that straight someday. And, um, that's also consistent with the state requirements as well. Um, and then students will, we won't change the, the number of graduation credits. That will remain three point five. I think that we want to look at changes in the number of credits that are required for social studies. I think that's a later, bigger conversation. So right now, we would just keep the requirements at three point five. The students would have one credits worth of electives that they would take. So, I think, um, move to anything. So it would still look like with ninth grade, they would take world studies and economics. And Joe really asked that we also very consistent with the course sequences we look at. Um, and he, Joe asked that we pair world studies and economics because it's easier to schedule kids that way. Um, so that would typically happen for kids at ninth grade. At tenth grade, they would take US history. They can also substitute in AP push or potentially just an honors class as well. And then eleven, twelve, they would typically establish a civics.
Isn't tenth grade a little early for AP? I thought that was typically junior, senior.
Is tenth grade a little early for AP? Is it typically a junior?
Most kids take it upper level, but the AP says that it's appropriate for tenth, for twelve.
We have actually AP social studies courses nine through twelve available to us. So human geography, uh, freshman year, AP push or AP modern world, sophomore year, AP push, junior year or sophomore year, and then senior AP modern European history. So there's actually a whole high school span for AP courses that, um, students from different levels could take.
And AP is just one of the most content heavy AP classes. And so I think, you know, Justin and I were talking about, we, we, it hasn't come up as part of the program review process until the last session in November that we had, but making sure that guidance and everybody is aware that we need probably need to keep that honors level in there as a, as a second step. Possible. It's likely that.
From that work.
Sounds good.
So I, I would ask the board take action to vote on that change because it doesn't, it does not affect the graduation requirements or the number of credits. It changes the sequence and how from six through twelve, we think we'll have a much more viable and rigorous social studies curriculum. So it would just be a motion to accept the program of studies changes as proposed.
Yeah.
So, um, when anyone wants to make that motion?
I will make the motion to accept the proposed program of studies changes for the twenty six, twenty seven school year.
Actually, no, because, uh, there are some wording changes for. I would just say as proposed. Yep.
Any more discussion? Hi. Thank you very much.
Kylie's going to be so happy and mad to hear that Greek mythology. She was like, we're really doing this again. So she'll be very, you know, happy to hear it's happening, mad she missed it.
So we're getting into our policies.
So.
So many.
There are lots.
However, they're all required changes by law. And so they, tonight could be simply used as a first read.
Yeah.
Um, may I request that I ask the principals to remain, but we relieve other administrators prior to doing policy. So unless the board needs them to remain for committee reports, it's after policy.
Does anybody need anybody for committee reports? You know?
I imagine they all want to stay.
Yeah, I know. This is.
They are so.
This is, come on, it's so exciting.
Well, we're going to nerd out on policy right now. It's going to be great.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
And the, the reason I ask, obviously, the principals remain, so they're part of the policy committee. And so they can help answer any questions that you may have as we go through. So I think, um, the easiest way for me to go through this is for each policy that you see there, these were recommended in the New Hampshire School Board Association Fall 2024 Policy Update. Anything that required a change as a result of House or Senate bills and/or something being signed into the law. Or some significant changes. So one moved from optional to a required policy. Um, I made those adjustments. We brought them to policy committee. We reviewed all of them. I have every reason for why the adjustments were made. And I'm going to read those to you tonight. I'm going to summarize some because a few are a little wordy. Um, and then you have the changes in there. And there are the dirty changes, if I'm not mistaken, right? You see cross throughs and red, bold red. So you have our original policy that shows the language we're eliminating and the language we're adding. Okay. So after they're approved, um, we would then obviously clean them all up, formatting and so forth. So summarized a little mess with the format. So the first one is BBF, student board members. This was revised in response to HB one, two, three, five, which you really don't know, but by law, it was revised. Um, because it was found that, uh, the law was saying that student board members were attend, were to attend all school board meetings. And that is not the case. Uh, they also added a parenthetical to paragraph D one explaining what confidential means as used in our SA one ninety four, twenty three F. So just a few changes. You can see the red. Um, that can exclude our student board representative.
It's basically just saying they, they need to come to the monthly meeting.
They don't have to be.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Must say two, so they.
So that's all that was on that change. Um, let me X out of that, open up DAF. Bear with me. I didn't think ahead. DAF's a big one. This was, um. No, that's okay. You, yeah, that's all right. DAF is the federal grants fund, Jeannie. We're going to go through that right now. You got it. So DAF is a pretty significant change. Apparently there, um, there were some changes that were made to try and prevent, uh, favoritism, fraud, uh, some of the other instances that may come up as a result of using federal funds. Um, and it's a rather lengthy explanation, but I'll, I'll try to summarize. Revisions include addition of a couple of sections relative to mandatory reporting on real property. Federal whistleblower protections. Additions relative to veteran owned and disabled service member owned businesses as labor surplus firms. So to expand outreach to these, um, veteran owned or disabled service member owned businesses to be procured. Replacing the term non-federal entity with recipient or sub recipients, just a language change. A big one was the expansion of relative to conflict or, uh, expansion of conflicts of interest and revision of language regarding mandatory disclosures. Um, and that, I think, was taken directly out of DOD policy, a Department of Defense policy for federal procurement. Some interesting, interesting language changes there. And then relative to individual employee timekeeping for time and effort. That's Jane's favorite. That was her highlight. Uh, relative to the audit requirements, other minor changes and removal of the page references in the table of contents at the beginning of the policy. And that was due to a software issue. So they removed it just to eliminate it. So it doesn't really get hot and heavy until you roll, I think, down to page, um, well, on page, what I see is page nine, but there are no page numbers on here. It's under procurement methods, micro purchases. There's a big change there. Okay. Procurement by micro purchase is the acquisition of supplies or services, the aggregate dollar amount of which does not exceed. It used to be fifty thousand. Now it's ten thousand. And so this, and so just about every federal grant we get, title one, title two, title four, CSI, IDA, is greater than ten thousand. So we have to use a procurement method. And if it's a single source, meaning no, we want to use this one vendor because they specialize. We have to go through more hoops in order to show that's why we didn't go out to bid. We went with this one vendor. So we used to go up to fifty thousand. That was so much easier. Not now.
So they're basically, it's just the requirement of showing what you're using the money, why you're using that person to buy that stuff from that grant.
And why we didn't go for more bids than that one person. Yeah. So that triggers that.
See, I, no, I was like, Pat.
I know. It didn't, it didn't look right.
Was so much difference.
Now I know why.
Oh, man, that's crazy.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a bit more involved. Um, just.
That would be so much work for everything.
Yes, of course. Yeah.
Wow. That's.
Probably just to discourage people from trying. I think you remember back when we did the food service and we did the dishwashers. Our, we have a higher level, but we had to do it at ten thousand because that's the level they set. This is now basically kind of in line with that. Okay.
And then, um, down on page, well, it's page seventeen again. You don't have page, I apologize. This is the conflict of interest and mandatory disclosures. It's the first section's DA F five. It's the first section that has a ton of language changes. Um, the way laws get written in past are, there, there are two, and policy, there are two reasons. One is to prevent something bad from happening. Or in most cases, to prevent something bad from happening again. And I think in the, in this instance, there's been a ramp up in the federal grant process of a conflict of interest that they're trying to curb it now at the federal level. Now, one thing about this as well is with the new administration coming in and the discussions of eliminating the Department of Education, it may shift this policy. But for now, because of where we are with the law and where the recommendations are being made, we should probably adopt it. And we might be back here in a couple of months, but actually it'd be longer than that, probably a year, looking at federal grant uh, policy again. Okay.
So for this, does that mean if something goes out to bid, it sounds like any of our employees, like, so if anybody's husband or wife were to bid on something, they can't.
I think you get into layers of that. It's not crystal clear. It's just, this says, I know it sounds crystal clear, like no employee, board member, or other district officer, or agent may participate in the selection, award, or administration of a contract supported by a federal award if he or she has a real or apparent conflict of interest. And then it even goes on to define what that conflict is. Well, before it didn't.
Okay. So really, it won't count for employees, but for us.
They're not on the committee choosing.
Conflict of interest would arise from the employee, officer, agent, any member of his or her immediate family, his or her partner, or an organization which employs or is about to employ any of those parties indicated herein has a financial or other interest in it or a tangible personal benefit from a firm considered for a contract. So Molly could not, or excuse me, Dr. Bremner could not hire me or my wife as a vendor because I'm an employer of the district. That's pretty clear cut. But presently, Dr. Bremner has as a, uh, as a coach, a leadership coach, Dr. Deborah Mansa, who did work for me previously under my LLC that I had prior to coming to Hinsdale. This might disqualify her from doing that if we were using federal funds to pay for it. It's that gray at this. So if we were using federal funds to pay for Dr. Mansa, I, I wouldn't have Dr. Mansa be your coach because I think we'd run afoul.
Wow. So it's, it's, it's so easy, well, like.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the thing.
Just abundant with options.
You don't benefit financially from that, do you?
Well, if in a couple of years, I, you know, after my time here, I go back onto the consulting gig.
Right.
And Deb's still doing some work for me, we would use it in our background as we've done leadership coach. So yes, I would. Yeah. Would anyone really know? Would anyone really pay attention? Probably not. But I would. There's my other conscience right there. So, but that's how gray it is. So, uh, we're going to have to review considerably.
Yeah.
There's.
Employees who violate, who violate this provision are subject to disciplinary consequences up to and including dismissal. So, um, as we continue to scroll through this fun house of policy, time and effort reports basically just lists out what general standards are and gets down to the nitty gritty of individual, uh, I want to, I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you. It's DA F nine. Time effort reporting, DA F nine. Individual employee time and effort reporting timesheets and required periodic certifications shall include the name of the employee, the name of the grant, and the information that's in it, the amount of time spent on it, the period of performance or the dates, the signature of the employee and dated after period. So only after the performance activity has concluded. The period of performance or the dates, the signature of the employee and dated after period. So only after the performance activity has concluded. Then the supervisor, who has direct knowledge of the work. And then a certifying statement that information is true. That has to be on the time and effort form now. That's new. So if we pay, let's say we use OSTCP to pay for. Anything that's wage related. Because that's considered a federal grant. We determined, we, we arrived at an agreement that that's federal grant, then this would have to happen.
So, like, our title stuff. Is paid through federal grant.
Yes, and they do time and effort report.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Everybody, Katie, gonna stick them. We have to know.
So this should means adding the certifying statement if it's not already on there and making sure that we run through all the hoops. And it goes on further down in DA F eleven. This is about monitoring and management of federal funds. That's a reporting procedure on oversight. So a district project manager, so someone like Jeannie who is running our title one. She has all of these responsibilities. Some were already in there. But they focused more on. The naughty employees and what she's supposed to do if she, her oversight leads to, hey, you're not doing what you're supposed to, or you're cheating the system.
I think it was like a rearranging of like the.
Yeah, a little more harsh, though. It, it, it just, they're not beating around the bush anymore. They're getting right to it. Like, you shall not pass go. Single audit is required when a sub recipient expends a thousand dollars or more in federal awards during the fiscal year. That's new language. So we're never not going to spend more than a thousand dollars with a federal grant, especially when you get like a, you know, a two hundred, a thousand dollar title one grant, or forty five thousand dollar title four, whatever it is. So that's for, for an activity. So every activity exceeding a thousand. DA F twelve, that's just on real property. We're just reporting property in which the federal government retains an interest, which to me reads as anything we purchase using federal funds. Or conducting federal programs on or in. And then the whistleblower protections is entirely new. And I think we're gonna see a lot more of that in other documents. And that just spells out. The notification process. So that is DA F. This was last updated in twenty twenty one. So we have it here for you today. Tons of fun. Let's move on to a little more. Light reading. EBCA Crisis Prevention and Emergency Response Plans revised to include reference. To the new chemical safety and chemical hygiene sample policy, EBCH. That's it. Just points us to another policy, okay, which we have. And so this was a template that was provided, so we filled in as much as we could. And it just works through who's responsible for what when it comes to the hygiene plan. We would want to enlist, obviously, the assistance of. Anyone, so at the, at the middle high school, we would work with. Nate for certain, right? And anyone else that could help us with this. Whoever keeps the MSDS sheets to the tree, Teresa or. And then most likely Nate would manage it over at the elementary school. So chemicals can qualify for anything, not just those we mix in chemistry class.
Cleaning. It's also working with your science teachers too, because they want to make sure what's in there properly, just so that you're aware. We did an entire cleanup last year.
Correct, because they should be involved with that as well, as we agreed. So this is a completely new policy. I know it's not in red, but I didn't want to cause your eyes to bleed by reading. Seventeen pages of red.
So what we know, like, under responsibilities, are those things that will be filled in?
Yes.
Before we approve it.
I don't, I don't know if you need those names of people who would be doing that to approve the policy. I think approving the policy as, as the template, we would bring it back to you, so you would see who's in it, but we'll actually write the names or the position. In the policy of who would be responsible for these particular acts. You're gonna see Nate, the director of facilities a lot. So, I mean, the board, you, you could decide to wait until you see those positions in there. But I don't, I don't believe you would need, you would need them.
If that was the case, we would be redoing them every time it changed.
We don't have to deal with that every time someone switches.
And I feel like we can trust you too.
Yeah, and we'll bring it back. So that's that, that's that whole. Whole policy there, okay? EH, Public Use of. School records. The September twenty twenty four revisions generally intended to reflect. That EHR should now require board approval as a procedural policy. Due to contemporaneous revisions to EHR. In response to amendments under ninety one A, which as you know, is our right to know law. So. This particular. EHR. Is a procedure. And I indicate it lower. On how we're going to process ninety one A or right to know requests. This came about as a result of the thousands of right to know requests. That started to be filed during COVID, because people wanted to uncover the truth of what's really happening in the schools. And there were some cases that made it to, at least in New Hampshire, to the State Supreme Court, that. It was decided. In order to protect everybody back at the school district and the boards, they should, the board should adopt a procedure. The way it used to run. I, I know in the communications plan how it was done here, but in other districts, right to know would come in. Superintendent would get that request, would look at the information. A lot of times it was email. You had to get all the tech director to retrieve all of that email. And then one person who is permitted to maintain confidentiality would review all of those email messages. Redact information that wasn't appropriate or that was exempt under ninety one A five. And then turn that information over. A lot of times what was happening is it was taking longer than the five days that was required by law. So we would always contact. We would reply to the requester within five days, and then we'd say it's gonna take us forty five days to do it. I will be fully disclosing that I am one of the main reasons for, for this policy, because. I had a two and a half year case that went to the Supreme Court. And I had extended the time to respond twice, but we were looking at thousands of emails, and I was the only one who could do it. Thousands of emails. And trying to run seven school districts. And Supreme Court found for all of my defense counts, except. I, my second time period of forty five days expired, and I didn't notify the person. And so that, he won on that, he won just that part. And so. The School Boards Association thought. Let's have a board protect the board and the superintendent by adopting a policy. And so this procedure, we could work through this procedure. This one I included, but I don't necessarily think that EHR, I don't think you should approve tonight. Because I'd like to work on it and put a procedure back in front of you. I think what I wanted to have you do tonight was approve EH. Because it gives the board the authority to then say, okay, now establish the procedure. And then I would bring the procedure back at a different time. Does that make sense? EHF one and two. Those are about digital records and whether or not. The board wants to charge the requester for any effort that goes into. Digital, are you, are you concerned about the rain?
No, I was listening and I was watching Jane.
Listening to that request, you definitely should be able to charge for that.
So you would adopt EHF one and EH F two, because what these do is, gives us the ability to then charge any requester for the amount of time. It takes us to respond to that request, it's reason, within reason. And the other form is, if we choose, gosh, you know, we should probably do this. For free, we would fill, we would fill that. So.
Yeah, if it's two emails or something, yeah.
Right.
Two thousand, yeah.
Like, I was just reading through it, it's, is it, it's stating like how many? How many? Not communications, it was communications, it was like interactions or something, like email wise. It was a, defined it. It said that. It was, I can't, I can't find it now.
Let's be honest, we paid these people to do a particular job if they're spending hours upon hours doing right to know requests. I've seen it. I've seen officers get overwhelmed with them.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm not saying don't charge for it. I'm just saying like.
I also don't like the charge for it thing, because it's almost like we're trying to scare away the right to know, but at a certain point. You're gonna get all your information, but you're gonna.
When you're consuming someone's time, you, right, you can't do that.
It's just like the copies, when it is before electronic, it was just copies and you would charge for over a hundred copies or something like that.
Right.
Whatever, you chose a number, you'd charge for copy after that.
So in the procedure, right, which is EHR, we would indicate that we would be charging, I think, under section eight, I forget the exact section number. That we would be charging for any digital. Review or any digital communications. These two, one is for a waiver of individual electronic communication that we'd be responding to. The other is. I think it's hardship.
Yeah, there was a.
Yeah, so waiver of charge for individual electronic because of hardship.
And, and who chooses that price?
We would establish.
And what is the hardship?
HR would come back with that information. Why don't you guys still determine that?
Right, so if you're gonna adopt EHR and we're gonna include. The charge for digital communications, you would then have to adopt EH F one and EH F two. That's, that's what these are pointing at.
And how do we establish what is considered hardship?
We, we can do that in procedure. And again, that would be up to the board, because then that's what gives the board that level of authority, is once you adopt the policy that says, no, you're gonna decide. We're gonna bring a recommendation or recommended procedure to you. You then get to codify what that procedure is, and it can include hardship, but it can include the cost for the work we do on the ninety one A. All of that would be within your, your purview, where before it wasn't, because. We'd never seen ninety one A requests in that volume.
Yeah, it wasn't an issue, so it didn't need to be a thing.
It was bad.
It was costing tens of thousands. That's crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had to, we used legal instead of in-house. We didn't have enough people.
We couldn't. Wow, yeah. I mean, I consulted with legal, but I did all the work.
Especially because there was more work anyways.
So that's what those are. Stick with us, I think we only have about thirteen to go.
Really, we're living stuff.
I know, that's why I'm trying to go through them quickly, but I also want to make sure we. Bless you. So GBGVA, this is one of three that you're gonna see about AEDs or Automated External Defibrillators. It's revised in response to passage of Senate Bill three seventy nine. Which amends a provision in the law that is related to location and maintenance of AEDs. How many minutes does Sam have to go get an AED?
Three.
Right. And he wants a golf cart, but we're not getting it for him.
Of course he does.
I think they'll go to NHIA.
We just, yeah, went over.
At least one AED. Shall be readily accessible in a well-marked and safe place for use in responding to product emergency, shall not be located in an office or be stored in a location that is not easily and quickly accessible.
And that's why we weren't sure if the elementary school accounted, because it was blocked, right?
If he has access to it. Well, actually, it could be, anybody needs to be able to access the AED. Well, what this does is it speaks to potentially the requirement to have a portable AED at the field.
Because not everyone can get, that's what we. Was the elementary school. And you can't.
I don't think we'll be able to use elementary. For that purpose, but having a portable AED.
Oh, good, how much do those?
Not in the budget when I talk.
Yeah, it's up there. It's not pretty. And then the batteries, when you gotta change them, it's even just.
We have a portable AD, one or two.
We're looking to do one up here.
True.
It's super important. I've seen them save lives.
It's like, let me tell you what.
Clear.
I bet you, I wouldn't be surprised if that's something especially sports related for like a traveling AD, you could put, we'd probably go through the whole fund.
Fun, yeah, we thought.
The whole fund would probably, I would think it. Might fall underneath that.
We've had retired physicians donate as well, funds to purchase.
So I'm surprised school buses, each, each school bus doesn't have them at this. It's been a minute since I've been on a school bus, but I definitely haven't been told in any of my fire trainings that they are on a school bus.
I'm gonna bring it back to next policy. School year and school year calendar, I see, so there was a title change. To school year and school year calendar. Sorry, I'm gonna talk above the sound of the rain. Revised to include reference to the requirement under newly enacted RSA two eighty eight four three. That schools use the state designated names for certain holidays and change the reference from vocational schools to CTE centers. Further, the policy had not been revised since twenty twelve, our policy. And therefore has not been updated with the new standards for school year days or hours. So. Our old policy didn't include that you could. You could go to the nine forty five or nine hundred and ninety hours, and it was requiring so many days. It also wanted to tell the number of days that people were working. And so, but every, if we were to change the number of working days in our contracts, then we'd have to go in and we'd have to remember to change the policy. So we added language that says. The school year for all employees will be determined by their very, by their respective work agreements, including collective bargaining agreements at will individual contracts. So it speaks generally and clearly, look at the person's contract, because those change. That's what dictates the work of the year for staff. And as far as section C and D, that's all new language. The board does not have to adopt. The language around distance education, that is completely up to the board. But I wanted to add it in so you could see what was recommended in the previous update that we didn't. Include whenever the policy was last reviewed.
Yeah, we don't do distance.
I don't recommend it.
And our teachers, they have not been.
I, I don't recommend it. I don't.
We haven't gotten a positive, nobody was like, yeah, let's do that. Everybody was like.
Prepare for that, you know what I mean? And like, there's all sorts of things that go into, I think, doing that. You'd have to have like emergency snow day preparation for online, which, ahead of time, which, you know, maybe, we, what they're trying, what they're already learning. Right, at that point, so, you know, I mean.
Or floods.
Yeah, I don't see it being.
I know, I just.
Unless it's like more than one day, you know what I mean? Like, if, if it's like, we do it with a week or something, like something.
Right, if something catastrophic happens, then we would be thinking about things like, just like, well, we had to switch for, like. When something big happens, we'll figure it out.
Do you want to leave it in there for that? So it's policy?
Well, you'd have, I.
We're not required to follow it if it's in the policy. But if we ever get to the point where there's a, a week where we're not at school. You'd have the policy to fall back on to say, we, we did approve it if we wanted to do it. It's completely up to you.
I mean, can you make it specific to catastrophic events? It says catastrophic instead of incident.
So I'm gonna.
We all die tomorrow and there's a new board, they know.
We all die tomorrow and there's a new board, they know.
They can, they can sit through this and figure it out.
I have a question, some kind of question, if we use that word, is that word linked to an actual definition in terms of does that mean it has to be an emergency of a buck? Or is it, can we just put a timeline, a significant event that is more than three days?
I put the word long term instead of catastrophic.
I think catastrophic might mean something.
To general.
If long term inclement weather makes it unsafe, yeah. Uh, okay, that day or days, so no, it'd be those days, it would then be those days.
I was like, is it gonna be like only the state says it is?
Remote instruction or distance learning days, and distance learnings in quotes, and so that's a New Hampshire, uh, Education Department term. The rest of that works. Yeah, okay, and then school calendar will be developed by the superintendent submitted to the board by February first. Board should approve the final calendar by March first, any, we'll try to do earlier. Any exceptions or revisions to the calendar thereafter must be approved in advance by the board. Uh, we will make sure it conforms to the number of the actual days. New, this is brand new, coordinated with the school calendars, the applicable C T E centers, so wherever our kids are going, we have to make sure our calendar aligns with theirs by law.
Oh.
Can't have more than ten uncommon days with your C T E center.
And we're switching schools, so are we in line with their?
We are gonna work it through, right, Maria?
So I have a question on that first, so like, so March, March is when usually when we set graduation day.
Yeah.
Right, I feel like that's right around when we used to do the calendar.
Me too.
And I feel like last year we did it late, everyone was freaking out.
Yeah, it's, ideally, it's better to have done by February vacation.
Okay.
So that, and, and a lot of this, it's, it's, because when people go away, if they go away for every vacation, they wanna make the reservation here and event, so.
I've never.
So if we do it in a year already.
I don't even go away.
Vacation just be home.
Right on, yeah, in my chair.
Be at home and not have to travel. Not traveling is the vacation.
Love that so much.
It, I might be having, I'm having a hard time with, there is a paragraph about high school graduation date.
Yeah.
Shall be set no more than five school days before the end of the scheduled school year. Am I reading that correctly?
Cause they have to, there's like a requirement.
We wouldn't set the date until.
Seniors have a requirement of a hundred and seventy five days.
The gradu-. Oh, the date can't be more than.
Yeah, yeah, we're reading it wrong.
Yeah, I was interpreting it incorrectly.
It's eight o'clock.
Uh, we're gonna have supper still, so. Let's get rolling.
Remember real quick.
Oh, that's right, you're good, so, you can stay.
I have bread that I'm willing to give you each bite of.
And again, again, we can, this, this can serve as a first reading, to give you, you know, a month to look through these things, all right? Um, I C A is gone. It was folded into I C. So, because we didn't need two policies, um, about the calendar. I G E is, um, just revised to reflect updates, updates to RSA one eighty six eleven due to House Bill thirteen twelve. I guess, like I said, two reasons why policies are made, this one, I think, is because something happened. Parent guardian names and any reasons given for the objection of the material, to the material shall not be public information. So my guess is that a parent objected to the material that their child was gonna be reading or using in school, and the school made public the name of the parent, which means now you've made the student's name public, and now you've violated it for.
Yeah.
So, they're gonna recommend we don't do that.
Well, we don't do that.
And then the note regarding human sexuality and human sexual ed, um, they've added some language around that parents are afforded, afford, uh, affirmative rights with respect to instruction in human sexuality, human sexual education, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity or gender expression, including, among other things, the right to receive a minimum of two weeks' advance notice of any curriculum course materials to be used with reset with respect to such instruction or program. Such notice will be delivered via email, other direct written means, website, social media, or phone call. So we were already notifying families prior to specific things that were popping up. It just expands what we have to notify them for.
Yeah, we're already.
And the part that I was grateful for is no notices required if the district employees responding to a question from a student during class.
Cause, what are you gonna, I'll get back to you in two weeks.
In two weeks.
And that includes a school counselor.
Right, right.
So. That is I G E, I Ham, speaking of dinner. Again, looking at, um, one eighty six eleven and H B thirteen twelve, it just, uh, refers to the statute, uh, as well as the protection of people rights or P P R A. Uh, it just merely ties it to a New Hampshire statute, that's all that.
I was gonna say, we.
That's a requirement, yeah. Uh, I K F, which is High School Graduation Requirements, reflects H B ten sixty six, which removes the requirements, this is the one you asked about, Anna, removes the requirement that every student complete a F A S A to graduate. All it does now is require us to notify all students of the availability of the F A S A, which we already do.
Tomorrow night is F A S A night.
Yeah.
Right.
I didn't even know that was a word.
It was, and it put some families in more urban and diverse communities in difficult situations.
That you knew you were supposed to, but you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I remember my dad refusing to let me fill out F A S A because he had to give his social security number, he would not.
Exactly, and that's why, that's why it's no longer a law. Uh, actually Superintendent's group fought this one. So, all that red language is just simply new language about what our requirements are, so. Uh, and I've designated you as the person responsible.
Got it.
Done, okay, that's I K F. J J, which one is it?
J J.
J J I B, school-sponsored athletic programs uh, replaced in its entirety and retitled to expand beyond simply discussing interscholastic teams and to improve connectivity with other New Hampshire School Boards Association samples. So, this basically outlines what the interscholastic athletic program is and nothing more. Okay. And then do you, moment, just take a recess, take a quick recess.
I know, that's just killing me too.
You can call a recess, you don't need a vote, you call it.
Can we deserve?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, like a five-minute recess.
Yes.
I don't, could use a second, not looking at this.
Thank you, sorry, I know I'm only gonna get home, but.
I mean, we're almost done too, that's the best part.
I figured people were starting.
So you only got, you only have six more. Donnie, you're still with us, I love it, only six more.
We can just continue.
Let's just keep going.
Yeah.
You guys all go potty, let's just.
I know, I have an iron plaid ladder. I can go all day with that.
Yeah.
Lucky you.
The rain, poor Molly.
I know you're.
Check the chickens.
I'm like, you're boring, you're little.
I'm so sorry, buddy, we're sorry. It was like, oh, he goes, I got you.
Who's sick, Clayton?
Clayton is so sick.
Oh, well, he missed it today, I, I had it first, the sixth grade lunch was really loud, so we turn off the lights and I gave him a little what for, and I was like, if this continues, you're gonna be two to a table, we're gonna have a silent half of lunch. I was like, is everybody clear? Yes, I went, I turned around to go walk and turn back the lights on, and two boys made fart noises really loud, the silent cafeteria, I was like, thank God my back was to them, but Sam was looking at me, and I was like, they're farting at me. I turned around, I was like, go to the office. So then I went to the office and I was like, I expect more, that felt really rude and disrespectful to me, is there anything you would like to say? I was like, this is when you say sorry.
So there should be something you.
We're sorry, we made fart noises, I was like, thank you, go. He would have enjoyed that.
He has.
It was funny.
Left probably thirty to thirty-five hours.
My son too, this is day three, he did not get out of bed, I think today he's feeling a little bit better, but yesterday and today, he didn't get out of bed all day.
I got home yesterday, I woke, he's on the couch, I woke him up.
I should have heard me the country yesterday morning.
Oh, yeah. Went to bed.
Knocked on his door, said, excuse me, young man, aren't you supposed to be up?
This morning.
Yeah, cause he had a lot for him.
And he goes, I don't know, like, adults don't have that choice, get your ass out of bed, go to work.
Go to work.
He's so dramatic.
He's like, I just woke up and I woken up, and I pulled my tooth out, and there was so much blood that my eyes went dark, and I don't know what to do, like, where are you? Like, wait, daddy, my brother, you better come home. And I go, honey, you're okay, then I'll stay on the phone, and I go, how are you feeling, he's like, well, woozy. I'm like, but you're laying down.
I get none of these calls.
And I know why. He's like, I told them not to call dad, that you'd be the one to call, I told them.
I forgot. Yeah, I got the call to go get him. Two hours later, Sam calls me, so you're gonna come get Clayton or? I come screaming out of underneath the truck, I got a drive shaft in my hand, I'm grabbing it.
Where, where, where was I, because I, I.
You, oh, you were in Washington, I think, or something, yeah.
Something, and he's, yeah, and he's like, I gotta go get Clayton, I'm like, oh, he's like, I went to Winchester, then we go right back again, and then he called me a couple hours later. Oh, my God, I forgot to pick Clayton. School's over. It's Clayton, it's the boss home.
Sam's like, do you need me to get, hold on, I totally came back and like another guy was working on some, I can't get this out, and I'm like, I got underneath, I'm like, all you're gonna do is this, and then it turned into, all I'm gonna do is do it.
I do like it though, because I'm like. Yeah, we're not really good at that.
Cover it.
Oh, my God.
We get worse.
Forget everything.
Yeah, that's it, and then you're done. Done.
I'm just glad she said something. Much better.
Starting to become a little painful.
You can recess to me, anyone, any board member can recess at any time. You just always have to remember to call back to order.
How's the rain? I don't hear it.
It's coming still for him.
But the copier's going, so that's why.
Yeah, definitely raining. This morning, I, I forgot, it was one of those.
Illa checks official.
Going to the university.
Well, why do they get to meet that too?
There's almost, there's almost one money in it, say college, there is a.
Nate went out and looked, there's like, I don't know what that is, you know what that is? Mark, or, or were you that, like, culvert thing that's not a culvert, next to our parking lot, like, but in the fence, in, next to the fencing area, it's like, there's a grate, but it's above ground level.
Are you talking about in front, you know, here? Oh, you mean the one that my guy ripped off in the parking lot, and getting the.
Yeah, and it's got like Jersey barriers around it.
But where like the kids play.
It's supposed to be the drainage thing from what, because where that all was flooded over there, they have to come to them.
Oh, I'll have to come look at it, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I have, we have these big divots headed that way, but it doesn't actually, it's not making sense to me that what it's supposed to be.
I'll come over and take a walk and we'll take a look, and I'll see if the texture.
We've negotiated some, all right?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Oh, that's awesome.
I'll come, I'll come and talk to Nate, we'll take a look at it, because I had the maps and stuff out.
I was just saying.
Because we couldn't figure out what was going on, because the roof was running out and it was going on the lawn, but it wasn't going where it was supposed to be, and there's a huge, like, storage setup in front of this to slow everything down coming off the school, and then be introduced to, down to Foucher's Pond.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not just this massive.
Yeah, I can't quite figure this out, it's like, it, that fence cuts in, there's Jersey barriers, and there's a grate, but it's above, and, but there's like divots headed.
Well, the grate might be, the grate actually might be like an air system, so that when it takes a charge of water, it allows the air to come out, and then, but to slowly disappears. Cause I've seen whole mountain, um.
That portion of that parking lot, my years, has always had water back.
All right.
All right.
You're super awesome.
We're all back. We're all back.
So.
Uh, we need to bring.
I'll call the meeting back.
They're in the same place where the others were, they're the same number.
Same number. I guess I don't need one.
J L C E A.
I look for it, I, I.
Oh, we just, I thought we just did that one, then took a recess.
J J.
No, we did not.
We are, we are on J L C E A.
We did J J.
J L C E A, which is one of the three.
Cause yeah, cause that, all that one did was they went, they went on Pinterest.
And, and there is J J I C, but I pulled it because the Supreme Court, oh, excuse me, uh, the U S Superior Court issued a stay. They have an injunction on it, so there's no need for us to look at it right now.
Yeah.
The J L C E A use of A E Ds, this is one of the three that we've already discussed, this just adds to it. Um, A E Ds are really important, so they have three policies for it.
Right.
Uh, that's what I thought. Uh, J L C J A, Emergency Plan for Sports Related Injuries. This was revised to reflect passage of Senate Bill three seventy nine under RSA two hundred and forty, adding a requirement that sports injury plans include a requirement that all school-sponsored sports activities for any of grades six through twelve be supervised by a person trained in C P R, and H I double A R requires coaches to have C P R. This really would mean that anyone who's not a coach, but subbing for the coach, has to be C P R trained. The other part is that it is amended to include requirements, um, that for schools which have A E Ds, the A E Ds will be maintained per the manufacturer's instructions, and that at least one be rarely accessible, pointing to that previous policy that we just discussed, which was G B G B A. Okay, so pretty straight, pretty straightforward.
The, um, all school-sponsored activities be supervised by a person trained in C P R is for, so that'll be one to, to definitely start paying attention to.
Mm-hmm. J L F, reporting child abuse or neglect, this basically, again, Senate Bill three seventy nine. No, that's not the correct. It's not the correct reason why. Hmm.
Looks like they changed them, some of the modes for.
This mode, and they, they, yeah, they further define, I just don't have the school boards quoted reason, but it's pretty self-explanatory. This what, I know that D C Y F language was applied because they hadn't reviewed it before, and they have now since reviewed it.
They didn't review it before.
No, no, so.
Seems like an oversight.
They actually asked, School Board Association, did they really look at it?
Yeah.
Maybe we add some stuff to it, and they did. So, um, those would be the, the additions all in red, J L F F one, still working through that, principals and I, we had a brief discussion about it. We'll make sure that we have a, a real form.
And so now, anyone who is making a report has to also report it to the school, because that wasn't.
I need, Superintendent's now required by law to be notified.
Okay.
Right, we were collecting them before, any, well, we were requiring that they be, prior to the arrival of our two new principals. Wasn't always the case, but they are now, I've already received a few, just in the last couple of weeks, which is unfortunate. But, um, the communication's back, which is good. Yeah.
This doesn't include, like, so, um, this doesn't include any notifications, like, we, I know the vast majority of our notifications have been from help site agencies filing this. So it's not, we don't have to tell Dr. Ryan about that.
Correct.
So it's only our own.
Yeah.
And it has to be the original form that they complete and submit, that I get copied on, so they just. So they just simply forward a photo scan of the form they've filled out.
Yeah.
Which is helpful. So we are in compliance already with J L F. J L P, note, parental notification and involvement in student welfare. Uh, this is, uh, requires a policy relating to disclosure to parents of information concerning students' mental, emotional, or physical health. Uh, this is under HB thirteen twelve, RSA one eighty-six eleven. Again, this is part of the, um, this is a new policy, this is not revised, we did not have this. This is part of the parental bill of rights work that's been going on for the last four or five years in Concord. Uh, where for several years they were not successful in establishing a parental bill of rights. They made some headway, and this is one of them, so there's information that is related to students' mental, emotional, or physical health, or well-being, sexuality, or change in related services. Um, parents have a right to that information through a non-withholding. So, the school does not, is not required to initiate the conversation, but we're no longer, we can't withhold the information if asked.
So if a student discloses anything about their sex, sexuality, you're required to tell the parent if they ask.
Correct.
That is gonna be an awkward situation for them.
There is still, there's still remaining the provision.
That was my thing, because some parents.
I'll go to the matter.
Right, okay, so if there is ever a concern for safety, you can, but obviously go talk to you about it.
I mean, it doesn't say it has to be at your district, at the superintendent's.
Authorized to adopt procedures that permit district personnel to withhold any of the above information. If a reasonably prudent person would believe that such disclosure would result in abuse, abandonment, or lack.
Correct. So if a student shares with a counselor or a teacher, something about their gender identity, parent asks, I would, what we'll need to work out is, if it happens at the school level um, online, so with a, with a staff member or a teacher, we need to come up with a communication protocol, so a counselor will come to one of you and say, hey, I just need you to know, a parent just asked me about, rather than give them the answer, because we'll then need to run that through with, is that, does it fit that discretion?
Yeah.
Because if it doesn't, then yes, we'll have to give the answer. If it does, then we'll exercise our discretion.
So, okay, yeah, just having like the form.
Yep.
And we, as we do for that procedure, do.
Yep, sure did. And then, I'm sorry, we're on the last one.
There's no more, father.
Donny, with us?
So sad.
What are we gonna do?
I know.
This is the third of the three AED policies.
Go AED.
So, we're covered AED-wise. So those are, that is, and that's, believe it or not, only half.
They're working overtime.
So.
The AED ones seem redundant. I thought some of this was to get rid of redundancy.
Not, not recommended to ruin, they does. But there, there are a couple fewer. Um, so I have the second half that I'll work on. Um, you get a, a month to let these marinate.
Marinate?
And, um, when we come back to our board meeting in January, can ask any follow-up questions based on your reading of them, which I know you'll do, page one, page whatever, um, and then we can hopefully pass the slate of them that evening.
I got the half of them.
And I'll wait till February to introduce the others.
So, um, so we're taking out E H R one from this first reading.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
So we need a motion to accept, um, all the policies, except the H R one as a first reading. I'll make that motion.
No, second.
Any more discussion of them?
Are you on the score sheet at all, Mark? We gotta get you on the board, bud.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
And relative to policy committee, we won't need to hold one in January, because we won't have any new policies to discuss.
Because you've done them all.
Because February is gonna be, the, the February meeting will be devoted to this.
So, we were behind on some.
Yeah, we were. I know. We're, we're trying to get through the update, then the ones that are old, yeah, so.
Super big.
Alright.
Other business? Any other business?
No.
You better not have.
Committee reports.
We're getting there.
Can we go back to I K F?
Hey, I was at that budget meeting the other night.
We're having dick taboo.
No shadowing. No mimicking.
Alright, so, budget committee. So, uh, we had our joint meeting, um, the budget committee, uh, we meet next Wednesday. Thursday, right, that's right, yeah. They moved to Thursday, the nineteenth. And that is with the joint, with the, with the select board and some department heads with the cap.
That's not with the school, though.
No.
They were talking, they gave us a.
January eight, right?
No, the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, our meeting is the eighth.
Yeah, with the budget.
Yeah, we're with the budget committee on the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Fifteen.
Yeah. Done. And we're knee-deep in that, so, there's that. Uh, community connections, we're posting, we talked about that already tonight anyway. Uh, facilities, maintenance.
I was not at the, 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 the emergency one, but, uh, facilities, that's right, we did run the three days, um, it was looking, the only thing we had on that is just talking about two thousand dollars. And I do wanna, I was gonna bring it up to Nate today, but I felt like that was more of a facilities committee meeting, bring up, before we bring up whether it's worth the elbow grease or not, because we still have time to, to go with that. And then, um, with the questions with the budget committee coming up about, uh, future projects, I think we would be, be a great idea to get a.
We meet Friday.
We, oh, we meet Friday, okay.
We meet, you have a meeting on Friday?
Yeah, I, I knew I had it all week.
Oh, we gotta, we gotta tell them party.
Yeah, well, you know what, I have three facility meetings that day.
Think I'm in trouble, you're not getting it.
That's right. I didn't say it.
Alright, HASS, I filled in for you guys.
Alright.
Cause I was over there. It was a reschedule.
It was a double reschedule. This was the one from a few months ago, that she couldn't have, and then had to reschedule places.
So, um, there's a state visit scheduled for April third. Um, there's currently a hundred and eighteen elementary school students and ninety-three middle school students. The waitlist is only on the K through one now, they, they've, um, opened, I think the second grade was the other one. Uh, is not on the waitlist anymore. Um, United Way has been very helpful in providing materials, PD, and actual physical people helping out with, um, HASS as interns, so, um, that's being fulfilled. Greatly, which I found very exciting. Um, she did wanna try to find a way to acknowledge United Way for all their help with the HASS program. I asked her to make up a, a blurb for the community connections. Also suggested she write something to the reformers, a, um, public statement kind of thing, yeah. Um, just to get it out there, so people realize just that United, everybody, yeah, everybody's gotten a push or had a push to donate towards them, out of their paychecks or whatever, so that we are, we are receiving that kind of funding in this corner of the state, so that's nice. Um, drama clubs pushed their performance back to May, apparently somebody did something to their leg or something, yeah, so, so that's pushed back to May, the performance part of it anyway, it'll still be going on, but just the performance part. And then, um, in grades three, four, and five, Anna Bassett, who's the M T S S, is doing M T S S, um, and getting kids ready for the big SAS test in those grades, so, um, she's doing work in HASS with that, which is falls in line with their academic portion of HASS that they're trying to build up, so. So that's what I have for HASS. Uh, legislation, I, I just did, there's, um, adequacy changes for our next year. We should be getting more money, from what I understand in my webinar. Um, what that is, I don't know exactly.
It's embargoed right now, so yeah.
We can't.
We're just gonna keep looking at you.
Yeah, yeah, it's just fine, but that's what they were, that's what they were talking about, that there's a change in the adequacy and, um, and the formal and all that, so that's.
It's very important that the free and reduced.
Yes, yes, that was. Then, uh, we should try to figure out some kind of campaign.
I didn't go, I know.
In the summer, try to get that out, information out before everybody gets their pockets or something, yes, some kind of campaign.
I'd like to actually, I, I used to like to do it quarterly, so I may, we're about a third of the way, I'd come back to send those out again.
Never hurts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright. There's other webinars on there, I don't remember what's coming up right now. Um, so check your emails. Personnel committee, uh, it's also me, we're in negotiations, so that's ongoing and me. And that's a lot of fun, and.
Friday.
Yeah.
Is it really Friday?
Three thirty.
That is also Friday.
Oh, is it tomorrow?
No, it's Thursday, and then I have facilities.
Yeah, it is tomorrow. It's funny, because I just asked you that ten minutes, I'm sorry, Donna.
Yeah, because I have that, and then I hope, I'm hoping.
I'll be here anyway, just push me in.
I'm so, so excited for all this process to be over and just get to like, maybe, maybe once or twice a month, yeah.
We get a little break in the spring, you know, summer. Uh, policy committee, you guys have obviously been doing a lot.
Do you want me to go through the policies again?
You know what?
I wasn't there because, uh, my dogs were dying from grapes, but they appeared, they did a really great job.
They did so much work.
I'm very upset I missed it.
Nope.
And no?
It was very exciting.
Yeah, but I was on my way.
I'm glad your dogs are okay.
I stopped at the house and she grabbed my bag and it was going.
Yeah, that was really.
And in all of her panic, she called.
I did call.
She did call.
I felt so bad.
So, alright, yep. Alright, um, select board.
So, we, well, did you go to one, Mark?
Yeah, I went to one.
Because I missed some, because I was in other meetings, but I did do a bunch of, but she took my thunder, I had the information for the tax rate, but she stole that, but I'm gonna let Mark speak, and that'd be great. I'm gonna let you speak if you have something to say about select board.
Actually, the, the select board meeting lasted like thirty-two minutes. And yeah, they, they weren't that long at all, and, uh, basically, uh, they talked about a lot about the bridge. About whose responsibility was for the bridge and who was gonna take care of the sidewalk.
That wasn't already decided?
Well, the, 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 the select board member didn't think that it was, that it was our responsibility to get involved in taking your bridge, and they were trying to figure out. But that was the main topic of the meeting, was the bridge.
State anyways, right?
The bridge. Well, Wayne can probably.
I'm gonna, I can shed a little more light on that, so there's a four-year process on the twelve million dollars they're putting into the old bridge. Jizz. It's gonna take two years to plan, and it'll be, take two years to act, so technically, there's going to be nothing done on those two bridges over the next four years.
What?
Wow.
That's bad news, they're gonna be taken over.
Mm-hmm. So, um, that's why that was ninety-eight percent of the thirty-two minutes that he was there for that. Um, and then I went to a bunch of the minutes, um, that they had and picked some brains. And, um, it's just, they've been literally, just like we have done, it's budget meeting after budget meeting after the different, it's doing the same thing we're all doing, just, and it's, there's not, yeah, there's not a lot going on, other than talking numbers and how much more we gotta go down.
Right.
What else can we, right? Alright, thanks guys. Strategic planning. With the, well, we did meet since our last meeting.
In November with the captains?
I know.
Oh, it was after.
Yeah, so that process is ongoing. We gave them some direction that we thought.
Got a couple surveys go out from a few different teams.
Yeah.
Yeah, answered some questions that some of the team leaders had, and.
Yeah.
Financial facilities is killing it.
Yeah.
You would think we would just build, just have a meeting in between the meetings that we're having together anyways.
Alright, and then, uh, tuition exploratory, for me, you guys just. Yeah, Dr. Ryan gave our. So we're good there. Um, wellness. Take it away, Kayla.
When are we meeting again? The next meeting's February twelfth at three thirty.
I just looked it up.
I was gonna say, I should make some memories down here.
We got you.
Most days we have our stuff together.
When did she send it out?
It's eight thirty.
It's all coming back to me. Okay, so in February, let's.
Okay.
Alright, uh, citizens comment, anything, Donna? Our community queen?
Thank you.
Anybody online?
Yeah, I'm here, Miriam. Has the district considered a social media coordinator? Can be a stipend payment, maybe a flat monthly payment? Facebook pages can be set up or comments have to be approved first prior to posting. And the messages can have automatic responses that someone will respond to in a set number of days. I also want to thank everyone, I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday. New Year, you as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, great, oh, oh, the question?
We don't, we'll take it under.
We'll take it under advisement, for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Yes, sorry, sorry, and it is late, and I'm, I'm not all here. Thank you, Miriam, for that. Alright, and we need to go into non-public. I was hoping we were gonna.
You let me do it quick, I'll do it quick.
Then we have a quick thing after that.
We do.
We do. Sorry.
Oh, we have an on-meeting.
We have a quick non-meeting after.
I make the motion to go into non-public.
Second.
Roll call, both, please.
Roll call, yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
On the board.
Excellent, you are all set.